Welcome, this is Peter Casper. I'd like to call the Town of Hebron's Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting to order at 7:00 on Thursday, October 24th. Those that are present, if you could please join me by standing to cite our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and welcome to those that are here in person, and obviously also welcome to those that are joining us virtually. Mr. Tierney, first to you, item number three, any additions or changes to our agenda this evening from the town?
I do not.
And from the board? Okay. So that'll move us to Section 4, which is Public Comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or Board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should simply make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's Office, or you can contact me directly as the Board Chair. Persons wishing remotely to comment should type comment in your name in the chat box, and Donna will recognize you. Donna, is there anybody remotely that wishes to offer public? Mr. Leiter?
I might.
If you want to reserve your comments for a particular topic, absolutely, because I know there's an agenda item that you're here to participate in. So we'll defer to that time. That moves us to Section 5 on our agenda, Andy, which is Good to Know and Special Recognition. Anything there?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we move along to Section 6 on our agenda, which is Appointments and Resignations.
Under Item 6 in your packet, under Appointments and Resignations, there's a Planning and Zoning Commission alternate resignation. That's his correspondence for Mr. Terry McManus resigning his position as an alternate under Planning and Zoning Commission. The term runs until November 2025, and then there's a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney. I'll read the motion, and then we can open up for discussion and then a vote. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Terry McManus as an alternate from the Hebron Planning and Zoning Commission with regret, and thanks for his years of service. Further, that the Selectmen designate Friday, November 1st, 2024, as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th and final day of which nomination shall be received is Friday, December 6th, 2024. Any discussion? Okay. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Very much. That would move us to Section 7, which is our Town Manager's Report. Mr. Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, under the Town Manager's Report, a lot of the activity is trying to finalize the ARPA projects, and a lot of the bids that we were waiting for out. One more bid for the skate park should go out next week, so hopefully everything will be out, and we'll have the prices in within a couple of weeks. Cross your fingers. So that's been very, very busy trying to get this all taken care of. I'm happy to report that the bridge at Grayville is almost complete. It's in, it's passable, the residents can access their homes. That was done within a week's time, and it came out really good. So they just have to do the paving to the approach, and then on the other side to finish it. So they're very happy with that, and so are we. The pedestrian bridge should be delivered, if not next week, the week after. And then we would just be waiting on the lights, the decorative lights, the lighting to get installed. But the sidewalks are in. It's been hydro-seated all the way up to, you know, past Patty Dunn's, so it looks really good over there, if you haven't been over there. Take a look. We've having a little bit of a traffic issue with the upgrades to the Route 66 and 316 light and lane expansions. What happened was is Kathy Osten, back in the day, got us some money for the upgrade, but the equipment and of course the roads are DOT. So we had a design professional design the upgrades, and we got a grant to pay for that. We submitted all the plans to DOT review. They were approved as a non-metered light enhancement, and there, we're supposed to coordinate with Eversource as this moves forward. We met with them since January. We had weekly progress meetings with all the entities involved, and the lights were supposed to go active today. And Eversource announced us just this week that they want that cabinet to be metered for power. Right now, normally, in the past, it was a set rate for a light. They just know how much to charge monthly, but because of the paddles and the crosswalk, they feel that the rate holders are getting an expense that's not fully covered. So even though the plans were approved at this last minute, they want us to put a meter box in, which has got about a 12-month lead time to order one. So I'm looking for the Board's approval, and kind of, this, we have to do better. This is a, it's a main intersection. We striped the lanes. The new lights are to align with the lanes that are now in place. The old lights don't align, so it's clearly a safety issue for the community public. So I took the liberty of contacting Eversource's attorney this morning, Kathy Osten, who've both reached out to Eversource, and we're trying to come to some sort of resolve, but I don't think it's going to be that simple. So I'm going to need to write some letters on behalf of the town. I just hope I get support from the Board of Selectmen to professionally share our displeasure this late. This job's been in the queue for five years, Danny. You know, this was part of the Ram Campus improvement, so.
Exactly, and this is, to me, this is inconscionable. You know, to wait for this time, when it's so close to being completed, to now throw the wrench in the works. Obviously, Eversource is not our friends.
Somebody dropped the ball.
So DOT and Eversource are supposed to be coordinating logistics of this install, correct?
Absolutely. Once the, once the design is done by a design professional, which was VHB, who does a lot of this electrical design work for these types of projects, was submitted to the state. It's up to the state to coordinate, you know, rights of way, and what encroaches permit you would need, along with Nathan L. Jacobson for that kind of stuff. But for them to sit back and say, all of a sudden, now, it was approved with a non-metered box, and now they said they want a metered box. And they're saying, well, we told them that. They, being Eversource, told DOT, hey, so just show, give us the documentation where you sent that, and that, nobody can seem to produce that. So you have a engineer at, Eversource, you got an engineer at DOT, and they're both steadfast.
Right, so they're creating a public safety issue that they need to resolve, and so we need to put forward as a town every means necessary to reasonably articulate our concern. It's a public safety issue that can't, that we can't wait for it to be addressed. So I would just say, on behalf of the Board, I would be as firm as you need to be to get this resolved. The public needs to understand that it's not for our lack of insistence that this is not being done. And we need documentation as to why they won't, you know, what the timeline is. It can't be, we're going to continue to argue back and forth, you know, DOT and Eversource, but we expect it to be addressed and by a certain date. And obviously, we can coordinate that through our attorney and whatever else we need to do, but I would say under, just under, to be crystal clear, this is an issue that needs to be addressed immediately. And so you have a, I would say, you have a full support.
Yes, I agree. In a perfect world, now that we know we have an issue, is to get those things powered up at any means possible, and then work out the technicalities moving forward.
Sure, behind the scenes. So the public is in negatively impacted. Well, thank you for your efforts, and obviously for bringing that to our attention. It's disappointing, to say the least, that they're putting us in this position.
Very.
Okay.
Early voting is going extremely well. We had over 500 people the first two days, and we continue to have a couple hundred people each day, so it's been very busy.
Is the expectation, do you think, just an opinion with early voting, that we'll get more turnout, or is it just more of a convenience for the public, do you think? I'm just, I'm asking.
My personal opinion, and I've heard this from a couple other people, they, that we kind of, we didn't do a questionnaire, but they just don't want to deal with the hustle and bustle of the day. So if they have the time now, I think it's, it's not as, but it was congested the first two days.
I'd just be interested if we get a higher turnout, and it's hard to say, because each election has its own draw, or lack thereof.
I saw the news, Ned Lamott left because it was, line was too long where he went to vote.
Tomorrow, I just got the press release.
If that's any indication.
If the governor can't go to the front.
But what are the hours for the, for the?
They vary. Do you have those?
Every day from 10 to 6:00, and the 29th and the 31st of next week, it's 8 to 8:00, and that's until the 3rd.
Do we have any challenges staffing that? Because it's staffed through the normal election volunteers, is that correct? So it's extra, a lot of extra work for them, I would assume.
It's, it's a learning experience, because we haven't done it before, and while we're open, parking lots sometimes an issue. We have a big function coming up this weekend, and we're just going to be open for voting as well, so we've got to make sure we keep some parking for that. So it's a, we're gonna.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Take them as it comes.
Thank you.
I'm proud to announce that Cassio, the Connecticut Association of Street and Highway Officials, held their annual Snowpall Safety Ruriyo, and Hebron took first place.
Okay, so you got to provide a little more context.
What's that?
You have to provide a little more context. So what do we do to earn first place?
It's like a driving competition.
That's what I'm saying, I want to hear about.
So it's a written, it's a written test?
Oh, wow.
It's, you take a written test, and you base on your score, and then they have a time, a course you have to go through with your plow truck.
Okay.
And they set up scenarios. We have to back in, and you have to go as close to a mailbox as you can without, move the cone so many inches without, so it's a, it's an ability and agility test, and then you come out and you do it in a certain amount of time. But you get rated on how good you do at the actual, I don't want to call it, each station, but then the overall time and the test scores, you know. So Paul Sylvester has been with us for 20-plus years, and he took first place in the big truck.
Wow, that's great. I was really interested, I didn't know how that works, so thank you. That's great, that's great.
And then, the Town Center project is this Saturday, trunk or treats Friday night, so the center should be bolstering with visitors and residents and dogs and alike. A lot of costumes, a lot of scary kids, I know. I just, the look on the kid's face when they can walk around town with a costume on, it's just, and then, and the dogs, too, it's hilarious. Some of these outfits, they have dogs in, and the dogs seem to like it, too. So he's, might make a guest appearance with our dog. He's, my wife bought him a costume.
Of course she did. Then the weather looks like it's going to cooperate, which is wonderful.
Sure. And then, we've decided in the last couple of years that 66 will be closed for safety reasons, even though we got a couple more stanchion lights through the CIP request, thank you. But from 85 on 66 to 316, that section will be closed.
Okay.
So it shouldn't affect, like, the hardware store, Patty Dunn's got a contest, and we've been working with those people to, you know, kind of make sure that they're, they should be able to get in and out with a short, short detour.
The go-around route's going to be Mill Stream, Kenny?
Yep. Yeah. And we'll have, you know, a couple Public Works people on assisting with the police department with barricades and the detours. And we're going to talk to the contractors and try to get all the equipment out of the parking lot areas, and hopefully, you know, where the bridge is being, waiting to be installed, that doesn't become an issue for interesting parties, but it's, we've roped it off, and hopefully, you know, we'll just have to monitor it. And then we had a meeting with Eversource regarding the property, that 616 Old Colchester Road. We finally got some more clarification. So they are still willing to sell us the 32 acres. They do want to maintain the access, or they're right away, because there's a lot in the back that's outside of the 32 acres. And right now, there's a restriction from DEEP on that property that at least a certain percentage remain in open space, which I think was our intent. Anyways, we were looking at the three acres up by the transfer station or by the road that was usable and didn't have a big topo. So I think all those things are fine. The problem is, we already did an appraisal, and we didn't have that information about the open space. Our person appraised it as buildable land, and they appraised it as open space, so there were two different appraisals. So what that did is kicked us through a third-party appraisal that our appraiser and their appraiser agreed upon. So how that would work is the town would pay for that appraisal upfront, and if we were to acquire the property, it would deduct it at the closing cost. The only problem with that is, is they would want an A-2 survey, which is expensive. So if we do the A-2 survey, we would be out the cost of that if we didn't buy the property. So we'll have to make some decisions in regards to that. But we got them in the office, we had legal this time, and we got all those unanswered questions finally answered, so. So Matt comes back, our Town Planner, and we'll put a package together, and we'll get it to the Build a Committee of what next step should be, and what we're looking at, or what I just outlined. And that's, that's enough, that was, that's enough.
So thank you for that. Thank you for your efforts. That moves us to Section 8 on our agenda, which is Old Business. So we'll spend just a little more time, although you highlighted it, we'll spend a little more time, I think, discussing the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds Update, which is 8A. So is there anything you want to start us off with, Donna or Andy, and should we have a?
You want to, you want to run with this? Let me run it.
I think we're making progress on some of the contracts. We have cemetery work for the Historical Society. We've signed contracts for the tree removal at two cemeteries, and more gravestone repairs at the Burrows Hill Cemetery. The old town hall has finished this phase of the work, and we've processed the final invoice for that.
That looks really good, by the way. If you haven't seen it, the windows and the painting.
They did a really nice job on that.
Just in time for the function.
Couple RFPs or bids have been issued, and then we're working on a couple other ones, so all of those are in the works. We did receive a refreshed quote from the security company on the Senior Center Security Project. We had a placeholder for $30,000, and they came in at $27,000 of that $30,000 by a few. And then we did add to the list of approved by the Town Attorney for Review of the Board of Selectmen, we did add the Hebron Elementary School placate request for repair of part of it, and.
Possibly repair or replace. It'll take either at this juncture.
I don't think anything new was added besides that.
I saw the 3D, some 3D printer information in the packet. Was that new? I mean, I thought that had been sitting on it for a while.
That's been here. I, we included in this package any proposals, quotes, requests for anything that is currently outstanding. I did not put Peter's house, so, yeah.
I was going to say, are those proposals supposed to go to Matt first?
Which for what?
For Peter's House repairs.
I believe so, yes. That would be, yes, that would be the place.
Because I do know that a bunch of contractors have their numbers together, just trying to ascertain just what that process should be.
Yeah, get them to Matt, and that'll get them to us.
Okay.
And we've reached out on the list to, you know, entities that were, said, listen, it's next week's November, we don't want to be Last Minute Louis here, so if you don't have that money spent, or it's not lined up, or if you're still in the design phase, we want that money back, so we can let the Board of Selectmen choose out of these projects sitting here, where you can automatically put one where you know it's going to be contracted. So a little premature right now, but to give you, for instance, the bridge, we put the contingency in, if you remember, $50,000 for this, $50,000 for that. It looks like we're probably not going to use all of that, hardly, probably hardly any of it, so we'll probably at least have maybe 50 or 60 coming back on the bridge. Like I said, that'll be done in, hopefully, another week or two. At least we'll have a better understanding of most of the obstacles we were going to face are beyond. They've already done the excavation, it's all just set, ready to drop the bridge in. The bridge cost didn't change, the sidewalks are in, the lighting's prices are going to change. So we're on, we're on course for the actual cost without the contingency.
So let me just ask the Board this question. We want to hear, and I think next meeting should be our line in the sand, when we make decisions to remove projects that don't have contracts, or don't, some assurances that we're not going to, so there's any ambiguity, or I'm not sure, we're still working on, I think next meeting?
Yes.
We need to make a decision, just setting.
I agree. My concern is, with so many projects, are we, I would suggest we try to keep the rest of the meeting as light as possible, because ARPA could take at least a reasonable amount of time.
Well, I think, I think about it in two ways. I think we could think about that as we dig in, or we could simply use that meeting to make decisions on eliminating, eliminating things, to then understand what the funds are that we have left in the next meeting, because I think there's clearly some opportunity to distribute funds, and we should be talking about how do we do that? We talked about some additional to the, to the food pantry, other things, you mentioned the Peter's House, whatever it is. So, yeah, I would think that's a section that we'll spend some time on, and I'm not necessarily looking to eliminate anything from the agenda, but recognize that that is a section we don't want to rush.
Right.
Because we want to give everyone a chance to, to get the funds, but if they're not ready, and they've had a year notice, you know, we, we don't want to lose any federal any of these funds, as we've talked about a number of times. And the only thing is, that I wanted to bring up, and it's just, it's been a little bit distracting for me, there's, Donna, could you just explain to me, it's on the packet, but the idea that there's a security need tied to the Senior Center is something that I think we ought to understand better, because that's, that's, makes me uncomfortable that there is a security need at the Senior Center. So can you just give me an update on that?
The security cameras and keyless entry, we've been talking about.
Okay.
For years, for all of the town. So we had funding through CIP, some funding in a couple of other places, and then we got the bulk of the funding through ARPA. We put every building and location out to bid, and we have contracted for every location, including Veterans Park, Burn Hill Park, and all of the other buildings. We had to cut the senior center, and we, we had to narrow it down, because that is as far as the money would go. So that was the only building we're not able to address, and that would be the $27,000, and that would provide cameras, surveillance cameras, and keyless entry. So that is for the Senior Center. Right now, there are no.
Okay. So I just, I'm going to put this out, and even though this is getting ahead of ourselves, what I'm hearing is we're going to have some money coming back.
Yeah, we'll see how much, but.
No, but there's probably something coming back. I would at least like to put out a motion at this point to add the security project for the Senior Center. The idea that, and it's been sitting out there a long time, and I just haven't connected on it, but the idea that we have a building in town for our seniors, and we don't have security there, makes me uncomfortable. And so I want to put out, I want to make a motion that we add the, because we have a contract available, the senior security project to complete the Senior Center for the $27,000, as a motion. Clearly, I expected discussion, and maybe the timing's not right, but I do want to put forward that motion at this point, and then open it up for discussion. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Keith, he's got a, no, no, go, no.
No, I honestly, I would have just, maybe just made it a little bit easier on Donna, and just make a motion to add $30,000 to the town building security, because it is, it was originally under that umbrella, and we kicked it out for lack of funds. So I, I mean, I would just say, let's move 30 from the, we have 53, 54, 50, 54, 003 in reserves, so let's just move 30 of that in, and next meeting we'll get some back, so the reserve will kind of fluctuate, but we got a little bit of play, we can just play.
I'm glad you were going to say something.
I agree, we should put it in. If we have a proposal for the 27-whatever, I would say just go with that proposal, you know, unless you think that there's going to be a possible overrun, but they should have a good idea of what they need to do.
Okay, so you're, okay, so we've got to revise on the structure of the motion, maybe in two different numbers at this point. What do you think, Tiffany, in terms of?
Yeah, so I think, I think if there's a quote on the table, I think we should use that amount, so we're precise, because I think at this point, we need to be super precise.
It's refreshed.
What is, yeah, with what exactly, with what exactly is left over. And I'm always thinking about equitable distribution of these funds, and so I was an advocate last meeting of giving the Senior Center some money, and I'm an advocate tonight to just push it through.
Okay. So the motion, then, are you in agreement with Mr. Pettit's suggestion that it's revised, and not be specific to Senior Center, but to add the funds to the original ARPA request for security measures for the town?
Yep, I can do that, too.
So I'll, I'll make the motion with that amendment, to be reflective of the original ask of the, the original approval for the security measures for the town of Hebron's office or buildings, and, and that we should be looking to move forward on that contract as refreshed, the $27,000. So that's my revised motion. Thank you for your input. And let's just for the discussion, move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or if you were abstaining, please note that as well.
Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. So anything else from ARPA? We've got sort of an idea of what we're going to do the next meeting. We've got, obviously, some good updated information. We've made an adjustment, we've got some updates from Andy. But is there anything else that anybody wants to talk about within the ARPA structure at this point?
As I say, we, we really are going to need that next meeting to have these finalized numbers. So that, that's, that point of time has come.
I agree, and there's a lot of, obviously, there's some new requests, and there's people that are coming forward with some new requests that are ready to maybe be the recipient of those funds, so we do owe it to them to give them an idea of whether or not that's going to be viable.
Well, the big, the big smoking gun, I agree with Danny, but the big smoking gun's going to be when we get those big proposals back for like the lights.
Yeah.
The skateboard park, whether those come in within the budget that was presented, or we're going to need more money.
Yep.
So then we're going to have to make a decision, do we add more money to those, or do we abort? And then they'll have a lot of money to move around. So I'm not suggesting you do either until we get the numbers. I'm not sure we're going to have those numbers for the next meeting.
Okay, but we'll do, we have to start, I think, next meeting, if there's clearly folks that aren't ready, or, I'm sorry, not folks, but projects that aren't ready to go to contact, we just have to remove them.
Yeah.
At that juncture, if they're not ready.
You don't want to be like, if this, we just put out the skateboard parks going out next week.
I mean, like, the, I know we have one entity that we can't get in touch with.
Yes.
And it's not responding, and they've asked for money, and it's like, well, if you're not responding, we need to move forward. That's not, not something that's in the middle. I'm talking about some.
Oh, no, no, absolutely.
Hasn't responded.
And we'll have a short list of that.
Yeah, okay.
And, and as the Town Manager, I've directed most of these entities that you've had long enough to do it, and if it's still in the quote or design stages, that your, your time has unfortunately run out.
Okay.
And it's just because of the, the demand on us to make sure we don't lose any of that money.
Right. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Good to move on? Anybody? Okay, all right. So that moves to 8B, which is the Department of Public Works Action Committee update. So I'm going to start, and then I'm going, I am going to ask Mr. Steiner and Mr. Leiter to participate as well. We're at a juncture where it, we need to provide a pretty substantive update to the Board on a couple of items. Doesn't necessarily have to mean it's a lengthy update, but it is substantive. And so I do want to say, just from transparency perspective, is that I, what Richard's going to present is a projected timeline associated with what would be required for us to even have a chance of bringing this to referendum by the middle of June. And that was, I started that discussion with the committee, saying, I think we need to at least, Board needs to understand and get behind and support, and at least acknowledge, so we can ultimately bring this to the public's attention, as well as what's required. We're at a juncture now where we can bring that forward. I asked him to put together a timeline with input, obviously, from the rest of the committee, Knows that he deemed necessary to, to help him with that. To give us an idea of what's going on and what it would, what would require. So we, with that, I've asked, I'd asked Andy or Donna provide a, an attachment just for reference here. It's a correspondence which will allow you to take some notes potentially as, as Richard presents the, a proposed schedule. And again, this is just what would it, what would it take to get to the middle of June? What would it even take? And I would think that there's, there's items here that are going to be difficult potentially to meet the deadline. Andy's, I talked to Andy briefly about it. There's going to be some challenges. But at least I wanted to bring forward what it would take to get it to referendum June. I think at some juncture, the public's going to start asking, when's it going to referendum? And the complexity of the project isn't necessarily known, but it's an opportunity now to bring it forward to, to listen to that. And ultimately make sure you guys are up to speed on that. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Steiner. You look all formal behind the mic there. You look good though. Oh, you look good.
Is it on?
About now. No?
Now, can you help? You're the tech guy. Can, is that, is that looking on all? I rely upon you to make sure.
There it goes. There it is.
Oh.
Check, check one.
I heard it for a second.
Yeah.
Oh, I can hear it.
Yeah. Can you just turn it off?
Oh, he can join us at, he can sit too, if that's better.
Yeah.
Would that be more comfortable? That's fine, Richard. I can sit, use that microphone, sit.
See ya.
Otherwise it looks like you're about to do an American idol thing or something. If you can, if you want.
I stand or?
Whatever you, wherever you, whatever you're comfortable with. I would get comfortable. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Richard Steiner, 330 West Street. I'm here tonight presenting as a member of the Department of Public Works Action Committee. First thing I wanted to talk about, if you recall when I was before your board back on September 16th, I noted that there were two things that were kind of impending our ability to issue the request for qualifications. One was an acceptance of demobilizing the site, which on behalf of the entire committee, we want to thank the board of selectmen for embracing that idea. That really has allowed us to proceed. The other thing that I brought up was the whole concept on behalf of the committee of whether the future DPW facility will have a transfer station handling municipal solid waste and also recyclables. And over the last several weeks, the committee and myself have been discussing that. And it dawned on me that for an RFQ, we really don't, we had said we wanted an answer from the board of selectmen sometime in October. Reality is to submit the RFQ, we really don't need that until like December. And I'll, I'll talk about schedule a little, little bit. So I actually, it was my thought and I actually reached out to two architectural firms and said, right now, the town is considering it. I'm thinking that we are in a position, we can issue the RFQ. And at a later, when we issue the RFP, we'll clarify whether that is in or out. And both architectural firms said, absolutely, you can issue the RFP. The RF, excuse me, the RFQ, all you're asking for us to submit to you is our documentation showing the building committee and the town of Hebron, that we're the most eminently qualified firm based on work experience, based on the personnel we have. So that's going to be, that was one of the requests from the committee that they asked me to bring to town manager's office and to board's selectmen to allow us at this juncture to issue the formal request for qualifications. It, it, the committee has completed their work on it and it's ready to be, be sent, sent over to the town manager's office. That would allow the committee to start to get qualifications in from different architectural engineering, for architectural firms to, to begin to consider who will help us during the design process. Now, as Peter, Peter mentioned, he had asked about a timeline for referendum sometime in June. But even before that, number, members of the committee said to me, we're not familiar with the RFQ, RFP process. We understand what they are, but can you map out a timeline? So that was like a secondary request. And then other members of committee said, put together an overall schedule. We really kind of got to get a sense of what the duration is. And one of the things that if you remember, I had mentioned that would be, there's two driving reasons why the actual hard constructions should start in the month of March. The first is it will be the least impactful for the winter operations, the Department of Public Works. The other very important issue relative to a construction cost standpoint is you're avoiding what they call winter conditions. You're avoiding snow and ice, snow removal. When you're pouring concrete during winter, you have to pay for winter concrete. You have to protect the footing. You have to protect the concrete. Any construction project that you're going into the ground, you really, ideally you want to start when you're past the winter. So with all of that information, I put together not a Gantt chart with bars and, and things like that. I put together just a simple, here's the duration, here's the finish date. So I mean, the first process would be to get the request for qualifications and then the committee would review those. And then we would shortlist firms and then we would get simultaneous to bringing them in for presentations. We would ask them to provide a fee proposal. And so the first step would be getting the RFQ out, shortlisting, then bringing architectural firms in. And then selecting and making a recommendation to the town manager's office and board of selectmen that this is the firm that we feel that we should, you know, retain. Our hope, you know, our expectation is that if we were released to get the RFQ out and if the schedule holds true, that by the mid, by the, by December 19th or thereabouts, we should be in a position of making a recommendation for an architectural firm to the board of selectmen and to the town manager. And obviously in order for them to start, there's going to need to be a fund authorization. We don't know, I don't want to be presumptuous on what format that, that's going to be, whether it's town meeting or. And I, I'll leave, I'll leave it to board of finance, board of selectmen, town manager. But that will allow us to go through the schematic phase, which is the first, first phase of any construction project. And then that would weave into design development. And then at that point, the architectural firm would be, have a well understanding of what not only needs to be built at Old Colchester Road, but also cost and duration. And that would be work into a, a town referendum of around June, middle of June. And we understand there's, there's a whole town, you know, there's a whole bonding matter that needs, and there's information that they're going to need well in advance. And that kind of anticipates that the architect will have estimates done well in advance of, of June 17th. So that Andy and Donna can submit that to bond council. And the way the schedule works out, you know, if all of these dates hold true, is that actually the hard construction of the project would begin in March of 2026. So it kind of is right now, if all the dates hold true and everything comes to pass, it's, it's very fortuitous. With, you know, there is a little bit of float, not in the front end, but in some of the construction, but not a lot. But I think if the schedule holds true, you know, we will start when we want to start. And the goal obviously during construction is to build, the first thing would be to build the new salt shed. That would be priority number one, followed by building the new DPW garage. So that would takes, starts to bring the DPW's resources back to, to Old Colchester Road in the late fall of 2026.
Okay. So of this, thank you, obviously for your continued hard work on this. And I guess the first question, and I'll ask Andy to jump in as well. The timing looks, looks, I don't know anything about this other than what I learned from you all in our meetings. What's, what's the, the most difficult thing in this process to probably get a hand around in terms of timeline? What do you think the exposure is? Is it the bonding process? I mean, what, what is it?
A couple of things, but like I said, this isn't a criticism. You got to start somewhere. And this is, this is actually a, you know, the first, you know, forecast is what it's called of what we need to get done. Now, whether we can get done in here, there are some things that, not that they didn't think about it, but we got to have some answers before we can get them done. So I think everybody on the committee and up here knows that we agreed to vacate out of the existing for safety reasons. So there'll be some soft costs in doing that. So would that be part of the referendum money? Or do we come up with that through a budget number to maybe some construction trailer, some temporary bathrooms? Some things you're going to need for them to still con, conduct business while this is being done. So there's a question there. I don't think that's too much of a timeframe, but to get back to Peter's thing, we would need a cost for the project to give to the bonding council, to have them consider how much we need to bond, what our rate is going to be or, you know, of, of the loan, incorporate that in and have a really hard number to be factual that goes into the referendum booth. But there's some other soft costs. I, and I, and, and all these recommendations are good, but there's a recommendation of maybe we could use the fueling station at the fire department. While the DPW did the construction, myself, I don't think that's enough fuel for us, the buses and the fire department. I think we use 2,000 gallons on a, on a, on a good week off by ourselves. I mean, that thing was undersized. Danny, you know that when I put it in there, it was undersized. And now that's only diesel where before we had 500 gallons of gas. So we didn't even have that option. And these aren't, these are small miniscule things. These aren't criticisms of what they did. So just, I think there's some internal workings that need to be talked about, but I think you've got the, the nuts and bolts of a structure here that just needs to be tweaked.
And there's, June's not a drop date. It's just to me, as a, as someone from the public who might not understand the complexity of the project, when I hear it's going to referendum, I'm like, oh, next week or next month or, you know, you just don't know. And so at some point we have to, as a board say, okay, we want to target a certain date. So we can start telling that to the public that we're targeting this date. And there's a lot of contingency, a lot of things that have to happen. But this is what's next. And it could be a targeted range. You know, we could say we're trying to go as early as June next year, as, as late as, you know, November of next year, a referendum. Because I want to start setting an expectation before we get criticized for not taking action. And then, and for those of us that are on the committee and, and, and the boards, you understand there's a ton of work that's been done. And, and we're doing a nice job, I think, with our communication. But nonetheless, I think at some point the public wants to understand, what are you targeting? When am I going to get the vote? And when am I going to get the information? And so maybe it's a range, Andy. Maybe it's, you know, I mean, again, I'm just, this is our board meeting, but maybe we put a range, but I think we ought to be as a board saying, hey, to the committee, we want you to take, you know, to bring forward activities that establish maybe a range for it coming to referendum. So we can start understanding what we have to work backwards from. And so, and Andy mentioned that some of the other things, or mentioned the fuel. Richard, Mal, I know you worked hard on, on coming up with some alternatives to at least let the board know there's some alternatives being researched to allow us to transition. So we sort of got distracted with, you know, one spot for everything. That sort of got, you know, a lot of traction in Burnt Hill as an example. But there's a lot of good work going on behind the scenes to look at alternatives and clearly no decisions are made. But there's no question, there's a lot of alternatives that are being explored and being presented as potential options that the town manager's office can then start doing some more work on. So that's that other attachment. Just so you know, there's that work going on. It wasn't intended to distract us with any particular item. It was more intended to let you know that that work's ongoing because clearly the public's saying, hey, I, I assume you're going to get some alternatives to some of the things that they've heard. And the answer is of course, we're looking at all, all options and no decisions have been made. But I just asked for that to be included because I wanted you to at least know that there continues to be work on that front in addition to the work that Richard's articulating. So I don't, in the weekend, if you have questions for Richard or for Mal regarding some of the, this, this, this process, or you know, maybe discuss as a board, should we be putting out at least, if nothing else, a range of, of trying to work backwards from that range. Mal, did you want to?
Yeah. Before, before you guys discuss this, because you're going to get into the discussion, you're going to also have to consider the finances. We will, we, we hopefully, if you, if you review, and, and Richard, by the way, did the vast majority of the schedule. I just threw a couple of ideas and I think, I think he did a terrific job. Good place to start. One thing that is a little bit fuzzy, I think, even in what, what Andy just said, is we're looking to start design work on, I think the schedule says the third of January. Obviously that means we get the bid out, we get the RFQ, RFP, we, we select, we make a recommendation, you approve. Well, on that day, we're going to start spending money.
Yep.
And we do not have.
Money.
The money that it's going to cost. And it's not, the board of finance, I believe, has up to about $220,000 that they can approve without a town meeting. This is going to exceed that, the design piece of this. And so there's going to have to be a town meeting before the third of January. Is it January we're planning on starting the design work?
Yeah, we were thinking about starting the design work right after a town meeting theoretically, January 7th.
So let me stop there for a second. So is the, is the funding authorization, is the, is the town meeting the only mechanism in which to create the authorization for funding for the design?
Town meeting would be the preferred method, referendum of course, but you wouldn't want to wait that long.
No, no.
But yeah, town meeting would suffice.
Okay.
Well, you would, you would end up having to do two referendums, referendum for the design. If you remember, the design work was proposed 250 something, I think it was two budgets ago.
A couple of budgets ago, yeah.
Taken out at the last minute as appropriate. And so now we're to that point, we are going to have to come up with some of that money.
Yeah. And thank you. But that was the seed money that I, that we were, we're looking for now. I was hoping to have that to do this work.
Right.
Whether it be the A2 survey for the ever source property, the appraisal, things like that. We're going to have to, if we're going to have to figure out what we're doing and pay.
And, and that was going to be my next point was if we are going to have the A2 survey done, that would be the time to include all of that money too. The other piece is, is that we're on a very compressed time here. And you know, Richard has detailed it out, but we have to consider in the finance side of that is the bonding. Bond council, and I'm just going to throw a number out there and Andy, Donna, you can, you can, it's open for discussion. But I would say we have to leave at least six to eight weeks to get the bonding all squared away. And if we need that number in order to do referendum and we need to do education.
Yeah.
We can't afford to miss any days. So I mean, I think one thing you might consider, I mean, as Andy talked already, you're having weekly status meetings on, on another project. We may want to have weekly status meetings or bi-weekly, bi-monthly status meetings on this project, not as part of your meeting, but to make sure that, you know, everybody, not everybody, several staff members are going to have to dos. And to, you know, and they'll, they'll have two dates. And if those dates are going to slip, we need to know that.
Right.
So that we can at your meeting come back and, and let you know that things are changing. Now, would you agree, Andy, Donna, that six to eight weeks is reasonable for bonding to get through if there are no issues?
Yeah, I'm hoping so. I, I think what.
Maybe we can check with Lori.
We'll definitely check with bond council.
Yeah, bond council.
The, the, what goes to referendum has to be 100% accurate. This project is going to cost this at this much, at a rate of this much with this many years of, of 20 year payback. And at the same time, that's probably when we want to grab, whether the infrastructure review of the, of the sewer system or some, or some road work that we are forming. We always, when we bonded something, we've always looked at other needs.
They included it all in the.
Yeah, at the time. So.
Good idea.
That would also take more time for the bonding agency to figure that kind of stuff out too. So I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer, but it, it would take all that eight weeks.
Well, and, and my point is simply that you folks decide, it's, it's a board of, board of, well, board of finance, board of selectmen decision as to what you want to include in what bonds. I absolutely agree with Andy. The most cost effective way to bond is to include known.
Projects.
Projects. How fast do we want to get this project up and, up and running? And, and Richard has, I think, some more details in terms of when he's expecting. And he's, he's done a lot of research in talking with architects that do this every day and the time they would need. So I, I give it back to Richard, but you know, I think we have to keep that finance piece and these deadlines clearly in focus as we go through this.
Yeah. The one piece that I would, one piece that I would want to add, just for support and validation. The two architectural firms that I talked to about, you know, the RFQ can go out without an answer right now on the MSW and recyclables. I asked them, what do you think the duration of completing schematic design and design documents will be? And both of them independently, without me asking.
And both of them independently, without me asking or suggesting, and he said five months, and that's exactly what the schedule does show. And I said, what is going to take after a referendum approval for you to finish the drawings? Four months, exactly what I had anticipated. And for their validation was a previous architectural slash engineering firm that we had been working with told us the total duration for design documents from start to finish was nine months. So there's some strong validation relative to the architectural piece that everybody should feel comfortable about, that it's been been validated by three different firms.
Just understand, we can't even start the bonding process other than to let the bond council know that we'll be coming to them until we have that.
Correct. So I I feel that it is essential that we make whatever preliminary decisions to get this moved to a town meeting so that we have an idea, you know, make sure we even have the money for that. So that needs to be set as soon as possible so it can move forward on this. Otherwise, the timeframe is is going to get bad. Doing anything around holiday season is always tough because people go away, you get the holidays. So.
And people travel around the country for weeks too.
That's right.
Yeah.
One month.
One month.
They mapped out the schedule particularly between now and the first part of the next year, was I specifically avoided or took in consideration Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's.
Yeah. Okay, so are we generally in agreement that we need to move forward with these next steps to execute, right? I mean, I would assume we're in agreement.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So and then maybe as we start to discuss and document this, would it then be prudent to maybe put a a referendum objective of a range that may might be more realistic? Because obviously I I put out June, but or asked for the June backwards. So would be, would it be more appropriate to come up with something that is a little more realistic? I just, I'm throwing it out for discussion, like, say, August 15th to November 15th, you know, whatever, or some date that some range as opposed to a hard date. I just, again, at some point, we're going to need to let the public know that we're shooting for a range to deliver the referendum. In best case, it'll be, you know, some, you know, July 1st, worst case, it'll be, you know, whatever. Should we think about that? I want to at some point start to get us thinking about how we communicate an expectation for bringing this to the public. And we can table that. I just, but I'm hearing that middle of June probably is a little bit optimistic. So do we think we should stick to that? Or what do you guys think?
I think.
Because I can just add, I would not, I'm sorry, thanks. I I wouldn't throw the June date out.
Okay.
But if you want to say between June and November.
I don't want it to be too big, you know, but.
That that may be too big. June and October, June and September, because Richard's done a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, the the big question mark is going to be our legal approval of anything and bond council. And we have to defer
Right.
to staff to really tell us, is that reasonable or is it not reasonable?
Tiffany, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I think the only point I would make about a summer referendum, and I don't know if Andy would feel the same way. I do think we see a significant drop off in people voting at summer referendums, and I don't think that should hold up the process. I mean, a referendum date is a referendum date and people can choose to come and vote or not. I just know, looking in from experience, that summer tends to be a slower time for getting people in to vote on things as opposed to, and I'm not suggesting it be tied to many election because I don't think that's always the wisest move either. But like an October date, for instance, or a September date when everybody's back at school and back in a routine. So that would be the the only thing I would throw out just for consideration. I would support either. But I do think you see a drop off in the summer of people voting.
So Andy, do you think from staying on that topic, do you think a range is is a good thing to discuss? Like, best case, we're shooting, you know, June, well, June 17th to August 17th. At some point, I want to put some some data.
Sure, I get it. I just think, like I said, Richard's done a tremendous, and the committee has done a tremendous job thus far. What we have to do is have a serious meeting about soft costs.
Yeah.
What's in, what's out? Are we going to put the A2 survey in? Are we going to put the the appraisal in? Are we going to do the investigation of the site? We got to get a cost of of that. And so what what's in, what's out? Transfer station in, transfer station out. We can put a temporary fuel tank pretty easily somewhere, but there's going to be a cost to that.
Yeah.
Knowing that this was not big enough. So there's no hurdle we can't cross, but there's costs associated with that. So we want to find out what's going to be part of the referendum cost package. And then you're going to have the soft costs of facilitating or the move out of the site and having them prepared so they can continue to do their work through the season.
If if we're utilizing the Lions Club facilities for housing the vehicles, they do have, I I know they have at least diesel. I don't know if they have gasoline tanks there, but I do know they have onsite diesel tanks.
Yeah, we would probably bring in a temporary tank like we did before we put
Yep.
to meet the mandate for the state when we just just put a saddle in, you put it in, and you have the quarantine that you need to.
I think it's, I I think to be fair and upfront with the taxpayers, they need to know what all the costs are going to be.
Yeah, because that might make a difference.
Start hiding stuff. And then I just don't want to go down that road.
I think it all should be in there in terms of it's if it's specific to this project, it should be in the project. Yeah, in the project costs.
If we're going to be at the Lions Park out where the executive parking is, you know, I don't, I don't think there's a lot of work that needs to be there, but we're probably going to have to put a construction trailer. And there's going to be a cost for that. You're going to have to hook up power.
All that.
And you're going to have to have heat. So nothing is not achievable, but we have to make sure we list this stuff with the costs, like, unlike ARPA funds. So we were accurate with our numbers when we go for approvals. And then we'll talk to bond council as soon as next week. Tomorrow being a Friday, a short day, we'll we'll reach out to them and say, this is forecasted, we got a, you know, a forecast with dates, we we think this might be a little tight, but we want to get here from you guys. But then they're going to have the 100 questions that I'm not ready to answer yet because we don't have the answers. You know, that goes there. They're they come in with the ties and the, and they're, you know.
You know, I think Tiffany makes a good point about maybe we maybe we don't do a range, but maybe we do a double range that says if we were targeting June 15, if we don't make June 15, it's going to be between September 1st and October 1st.
We're going to shoot for that, yeah.
Something like that, because absolutely we're going to get criticized to death if 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 anybody even thinks that we're going to look for a referendum during the summer.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
I I agree with that. I don't necessarily think we should do a range, though, because a range leaves it very nebulous for people. And so they are more apt to be like, I can let this slip a day because it's a range.
Yeah.
I would propose that we have three hard dates. We do June 1st as like, that would be optimal. A small slip of June 13th and then a big slip of September 13th. And those are your three dates. It's not, so it's not so much a range. People still have like, I'm shooting for this date and I need to stay on schedule. But we do have a little slip and we got a big slip. And hopefully people don't get caught in the big slip. But I I agree, I don't want to be caught, you know, in summertime when 20% of town is
Not here.
in Thomas.
Okay, so let's, maybe here's a a summary as I'm thinking about it. Maybe we for to move forward, we we put out, we leave the date as June 17th. There's obviously a number of things that have to happen almost immediately that'll give us an idea if that number needs to be changed. And so we could say we're starting with a timeline to target June 17th. And, you know, please recognize, I'm saying, of course, now, but please recognize that once we get into some of the the next step of details, we may have to adjust that date, but we are pushing hard for mid, you know, before the summer of 2025. That's the goal. And then as we get more information, we may need to reserve the right to push another date out there. But it won't be, it won't be a range. It'll be we're targeting for before the summer starts. You know, that, you know, right before school ends. That's what we're targeting. And we reserve the right to change that as information develops because there's clearly a significant amount of steps that have to happen. And then and then we'll go from there. You'll get more feedback as we move forward on the bond. We'll get more, we'll deal with the soft costs. We have to. And so our takeaway is I would suggest we leave the date, but with the caveat that we may need to adjust that once information develops. We've got a December targeted date that the board needs to make a decision on, which to me seems pretty huge. And MSW and recyclables, that seems to be like a monster, a big decision. Changes sort of the course of what Hebron looks like from that services perspective. And so that seems to be a big takeaway here. And then Andy makes a good point about the soft costs. And, you know, when do you think, Andy, you could start sort of summarizing the, at least the categories of the soft costs? You threw out a quick five or six off the top of your head, but I'm clear.
Yeah, we could start, I got Paul start working on it right away.
Okay, good. So we'll start developing this off costs. Well, the board's going to have to start discussing that bigger topic. So I think we should put that on next meeting's agenda to at least start discussing the concepts associated with that. And that means that, and and this is a question back to Andy, if we're going to fully assess the MSW recyclable issue, how do we, what's required for you to tell us the real cost of running that facility? What's involved with that? Because we have to see, we have to compare the cost of running the facility versus the cost of of paying for the sale of the services.
Yeah, we could, we could just tell you what we budgeted every year.
Okay.
Calculate calculate the salaries that work there and then we'll amortization of the equipment, the truck and the
Okay.
the containers and, you know, the compacters.
You could, you could come up with some, you know.
As accurate as we can be, because there's going to be some guesswork in there, but
Okay.
I guarantee you, it's not a million dollars a year.
Okay, okay. So, and then I know, just to refresh, the board, Richard, you had done quite a bit of work in getting some feedback from potential third parties. So maybe you just comment on where, just to refresh, I know you've covered it already, but just to refresh the research that's already been done on.
Yeah, a number, a number of the members of the committee, myself and someone else, reached out to some towns that had, let me say, studied the evaluation. Not necessarily may have proceeded to go to curbside or may have decided not to. But there was two common themes that we heard was that when a town goes through and does their assessment of costs, they really, one town manager used the word bloodhound, they really need to look at, really vet out not not only the obvious costs, but costs that are rather benign, but still start to add up. You know, just a very brief list. He used the phrase comprehensive labor costs. You know, there's the obvious costs of the attendant in the upper area and the attendant in the lower area, but he kind of referred to public works personnel that would be moving dumpsters around, compacting things and and kind of making sure that time gets gets tallied. So comprehensive labor costs, material, equipment, equipment, you know, backhoes and and the compactor, all those costs relative to not only keeping them functioning, electric consumption, diesel consumption, repairs, maintenance, permit fees, insurance and administrative costs because MSW and also the handling of recyclables requires them to file, Mary Rose Betts, to file paperwork on a weekly, monthly and yearly basis with the deep. The other thing that we heard was for some municipalities to really get a more precise number on what the curbside would be, they actually issued an RFP, request for proposals. Because just to ask somebody over the phone, what do you think it's going to cost to provide curbside pickup to 3,500 residents? Kind of really kind of need to articulate. And some of the towns did articulate in a formal presentation, a a proposal so that they were able to get, you know, really not exact numbers, but much more where the where the trash haulers really sharpened their pencil. The recommendation that came out of the the committee meeting on Monday night was there might, there would be a benefit twofold for the town. One, to in order to do this assessment and issue an RFP, the town would have a good benchmark of here's our cost currently and here's our cost if we go to curbside. The other benefit of having that number in hand was would help the board of selectmen make a determination on how we're going to handle the year plus where the transfer station is going to be out of commission. So I I think it would just the committee's recommendation that an RFP be issued. And I know Mal and I said that we would be willing to help staff put that together.
Okay, so I would think we would want to do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's proceed with that.
Okay.
That's great. How do we make a decision without that information? Okay. So what else do you need from the board's perspective in terms of direction or support or clarification as to what needs to be done next?
I think the the one thing we 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 need to get a sense, the RFQ is complete. So the real question is, can it, can it, can it be advanced on to town manager's office, legal counsel, Helen and Sage, to be reviewed so that it can be can be issued? That that is kind of the 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 question at this point.
I think the other thing that we we do need is a list of the tasks and who's responsible. And we're not going to be calling people, but when we when we meet with Andy, we have to say that employee X was working on a fuel tank. Where are we? And and the due date was such and such. And that that would obviously come from town manager's office.
Right, sure.
But I think having worked on projects that are are close timeframes, if you don't know who's responsible.
Right.
And you're not, you know, maintaining communication, sometimes it just slips. Because there are a lot of, we understand that there's a lot of, lot of other things going on in its town. But if we are going to try to make these deadlines, I think we need to, you know, have similar to what you would see on a Gantt chart, a task, a person responsible and a timeframe. And we'll work with with Andy on on the list of the tasks we see. Then you can just take it from there.
Once again, I'm just being forward and honest. Everybody knows that we're we're just getting in the middle of CIP.
Yep.
Trying to finalize ARPA in the next two months, which is taking a lot of time of those people that would be doing some of this work. So it's not an excuse. It's just on top of their normal jobs. They've already got a couple.
And that will play right into the, is this schedule real or do we?
Yeah, we need to outline what's required and you need to tell us what you can and can't do.
Yeah.
And then we'll help prioritize if need be, you know, or take, you know, be the one that says, hey, okay, we're going to, we're going to wait on this.
Yeah.
Or not.
And I, Mel, I think Mel and I, I think everybody agrees with the statement. I'm going to say what we do, we want to do well. I don't want to put so much on that. It's done haphazardly.
Right.
We want our CIP to be done and thoughtful and done well. We want an aggressive, you know, compromise of all the the costs. So we would talk with the town and I have that ability to talk. I know West Hartford just did an analysis of their, you know, their transfer station. And and there's a lot of other societies that are doing different things with pay to throw and this and that, but we're not there. Ours is a little bit different. What we're looking for. But I think it's time we finally get those numbers and make sure we include. So the list that you brought up would be great to have all those and make sure they put a number to those. And how they achieve that number would even help us more understand.
I've reached out to Lori Spielman in.
Ellington? Is she in Ellington?
In Ellington. And they've, in the last few years, they've converted from a transfer station to they're they're doing curbside now.
Yeah, and I, you got to remember what what the kind of, what the garbage business is. So you're 100% right. You got to do this because they're not going to give you a number. So you can do it in a public meeting and all the competitions saying, oh, well, Casella's gave them a price of this per house. So that that until you do, like, you're serious, then you'll get a serious number. So. Right, Todd? They don't want to show their cards. They barely gave us what we asked for 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 what we have now.
Okay, so are you comfortable with what we need to do, or what the building community needs to do, our Department of Public Works, ACT Security, which translates into you doing most of the work? Are you good with what you needed from us in terms of direction, clarity and support to move forward?
Yeah, I think the the one thing that we that I, the committee is going to want to know from me and Mal after tonight's meeting is, will the RFQ be forwarded on? Will it be sent out? Will it be held?
Yes.
And there's a question for your board and for the town manager's office. Are we at the point where the RFQ can be issued? It's complete.
We do, we do run into significant delays from legal counsel sometimes.
Okay.
I'm going to have to put it in writing.
Okay.
If we can just tell them that this is an important thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Need to move it along.
So we'll work with Andy.
Donna's always very good.
I've heard that.
The minute we ask the question, she's asking the question.
Okay. All right, so. All right, so are you comfortable in a good spot at this juncture? Is the board comfortable or in a good spot?
I'm just, I just want to verify, you know, looking at this, I think we need to have an idea of the type of money we need to get together for this RFQ to go out.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that, that I see as being our first mission to get that dollar amount. Schedule a town meeting because that's going to take time to, to get those funds allocated.
Good, just for the record, we will not see numbers until after we submit or send out the request for proposals and that, the shortlist. That's at the point where we'll get documentation. The RFQ is just to provide the committee with a list or the submittals from a.
Okay.
What it comes down to, Dan, is we will see numbers, 17th of December, is it? We will see numbers in, in early to mid-December.
That we can then act upon.
Meeting scheduled.
For.
Time.
Around that date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and any, anything else that the town needs to include in those, in that.
Okay. So that's what I, that's what I was trying to get my head around.
The architect, Andy's looking to cover, Andy and Donna are looking to cover soft costs that are going to be involved with the move and the design. And like the oil paint.
All the stuff we need to know about, right? Okay, well, great job. Thank you so much. And thanks for the extended time on this. I think it was pretty important that we, we covered a lot of these details. So we're, we're at that point.
Taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for indulgence. We covered a lot of important material. And thank you again, Richard and Mal for your contributions. All right, that.
We don't, so we do not need anything formal, other, it's just a general to start on the RFQ.
The direction, you know, and the support to move forward.
Move forward with this.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Keep tweaking it and reporting back where we are.
Good, thank you. Okay, so eight, that moves us to eight C, which is our Board of Selectmen's Communication Strategy. So I, Mr. Tierney, we have revised draft.
I'm just going to provide the drum roll and let Selectman Tiffany Ventura take care of this.
Okay, so I will, I will then defer the motion as well as any discussion to be started by Tiffany, who has, who's developed this plan and with the input of our town's attorney. And then we'll open it up for discussion and go from there.
Yeah, I'll just say that I just wanted a couple of extra days to go through the changes. I didn't see anything that didn't go against the, you know, the theme of the proposal in place. So I just accepted everything. Hopefully I did that correctly. So what you have in here is proposed final. So I'll read the motion, that way we can open up discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen adopt the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen Rapid Response Plan as presented or amended.
Okay, motion's been read. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And let's open it up for discussion. Discussion.
These is the kind of areas that I refer to people that that's what their occupation is.
Okay. Keith, anything you wish to add? I know we've discussed this already at length, but I mean, anything you wish to comment on, but.
No, I, I was, I was basically in the same boat. I think that, you know, Tiffany did a fantastic first draft. Ken went through and made some, some, you know, small changes and alignments of, of general language, which in complete agreement with as well. And, you know, this is our, this is our first stab at it. I mean, these, these things can be changed if we feel that there's a need to alter direction or, or alter slightly language if we think that things are going a little off later. So I mean, I am fine with it as is, and if we see a need, then we'll fix it at that time.
And I just want to say, I actually would like to thank the board and the town staff for empowering me to write this for the town. I think it's important. I think it's essential that we meet town residents where they are and they are on social media. And I think this is an area that this board and, and overall that, you know, I think that we've neglected from time to time as a board. And so I'm proud that I was able to pull this together. I'm glad everybody likes it. You know, and we'll, like with any communication strategy, it's about pacing and matching. You know, if we find that it's not working, we can always come back and fix it, as Keith said, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, I've seen the town and, and the town attorney for providing oversight. So we have a consensus and obviously the appropriate eyes on it from start to finish. So thank you, Andy, for facilitating that. So discussions ended on this item, we'll move forward to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or if you is to abstain, please note that as well. Mr. Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Surprising. Peter Caspari, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. There is a note in the Rapid Response Plan that we just agreed to that the chairperson of the Hebron Board of Selectmen shall nominate an individual primarily tasked with distributing any rapid response messaging on Facebook. And so that, that note about nomination, do you think I should have a motion for that? Or simply I'll nominate Tiffany?
I think it should be a consensus of the board.
Okay, so I'll make a motion as the chair that, and nominate if she agrees Tiffany Tealy to be the individual, individual on our board, primarily tasked with distributing any rapid response messaging on Facebook. And obviously adhering to the practices that we just agreed to. That is the motion. Open that up for discussion.
You realize this is for no compensation, right?
You continue to get paid just as much as you do.
Exactly right. It's the same amount of pay, so why not?
I'm going to double your pay. Double what you get now. And I, and I, of course, assuming that you would accept that responsibility. All right, so we're going to move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or if you is to abstain, please note that as well. Mr. Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Should I vote for myself?
Yes, you can do.
Okay, Tiffany Tealy, aye. I just want to make sure.
As, as far as I know, you can do that. Regardless, Peter Caspari, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you for taking on that role in the development and obviously the lead as well. It's very important and we'll look forward to your comments as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to eight D. Mr. Tierney, any other old business you wish to bring before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any board member wish to bring any, anything to the old business that isn't, hasn't already been discussed? No, okay. So Mr. Tierney, we'll move to nine, which is new business, proposed ordinance, Board of Assessment Appeals Alternates. If you could lead us in that topic, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, nine A is proposed ordinance for the Board of Assessment Appeals Alternates attached to the proposed ordinance to establish appointed alternates to the Board of Assessment Appeals. If the Selectmen decide to move forward with this and acting this ordinance, a public hearing should be scheduled. A proposed date for the public hearing would be Thursday, November 21st, 2024, 6:45 PM. And then there's a proposed motion.
Okay, so what I'll do, and it has been some really good dialogue in this, Mr. Pettit is providing some good dialogue and, and, and continue getting clarity from our town's attorney. So, so we do want to talk a little bit about that, make sure there's opportunity for that. But Mr. Larson, would you be so kind as to read the motion?
Sure. The motion moved the Hebron Board of Selectmen schedule a public hearing for Thursday, November 21st, 2024 at 6:45 PM at the Hebron Town Office Building Lower Level Meeting Room to receive public comment on the proposed ordinance regarding appointment of Board of Assessment Appeals Alternates.
Thank you. Motion's been read. Just before we open up this to discussion, maybe Mr. Tierney, you could provide a, for us, a brief summary. A lot of material, but a brief summary is what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need to do this. But after COVID, we're not in a perfect world. And they have all these new options and meetings and hybrid and stuff. But the Board of Assessment Appeals, those are elected officials. And there's a statute that's a little bit different for that versus some of these other boards and commissions. And one is there's a, there's a tight timeframe to conduct that work. The second thing is, is you only meet twice a year. So whether it be a Democratic elected official or Republican elected official, if they were available, like they ran for, for this position, we wouldn't have this issue. But last year it became an issue for one hearing, but we, we scrambled and got it done at the second meeting we met the deadline. This year was a real challenge. So we have a new assessor and she was really upset that we weren't going to meet the obligations. And, you know, she's, you know, sworn and has her certificate and wants to make sure she's delivering by the book. So I reached out to the town attorney and said, what are the alternatives? I mean, the best alternative would be to do nothing and have the people that are appointed or elected to these positions fulfill their obligation. But the town still needs to conduct their business. So this was a way that if that does happen again, if we pass an ordinance, the Board of Selectmen can appoint alternates to that elected committee.
So is, are you, is this, so this would be almost in, in a, like, it wouldn't be a permanent, it'd be like an emergency situation.
Yeah, you could do it or not have to do it, but you would need the ordinance.
An option available.
Right. The confusion was, is because we're, in, in the town attorney's opinion, the statutes vary, it's interpretations like the building code or the fire code, it's how you interpret it. His interpretation is because we're a charter town, you guys call yourself a board of selectmen, but because we're a charter town town manager, you're really a council. So that's why in his correspondence, he highlighted the green and said that the, the governing body or the legislative body for that purpose would be a town meeting. So you could still do it at a town meeting, but that's a lot more cumbersome. And to get that together, especially if it's close to the timeframe you're trying to meet with the deadline for OPM and, and, and that October, November timeframe where you have to get these hearings done. So he came up with two, two rational reasons. One is luckily one of the members was able to meet in public and he met with the people and they videotaped that. He took the documentation and we sent them on their way. Then we sent that information to the person that's out of state. They viewed it, made his own opinion, then they had an actual meeting and voted and then them, it came out. So we met it, it was really cumbersome. So we said, how can we do something to put a safety net in place? And this is what he came up with. You can do it, you don't have to do it. Like I said, in a perfect world, if the people that we put up for these things do, they fulfill their thing, we wouldn't need it. But unfortunately, we scrambled and I'd hate to see the town get a strike up at OPM or a new assessor thinking that, you know, the one, one member was legitimately sick, he couldn't make it, couldn't leave the house. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, unfortunate and nobody would. But the other person, if they're, if they're not going to be available, you know when the dates are and the timeframes, it's the same every year. You gotta make that commitment. If you're not going to do that, then we got to look for somebody else, you got to vacate that, seat or not run. And right now we've had that issue two times.
Okay. So, okay, with that, let's open it up for discussion. Now Keith, you had some thoughts on it, I don't, do you want to start the discussion?
Well, I, I, I had a couple of, a couple of competing issues with this. The, first off is that, you know, we have a board that's established in charter, which is a continuation of stuff that's in the general statutes. And now we're going to put another portion of that board in ordinance. So, you know, you would basically have to be a town legal scholar to make sure that you're checking all the boxes and, and stuff. And I just think that that sets the public up for not really understanding the workings of the town. I would feel more comfortable with it either all being in charter or, or, you know, I, I just would like to see a, a uniformity to it. So, I mean, I think honestly, if we're going to tackle this problem long term, that I would look toward expanding in the charter since, especially since it's open right now, from a three-person board to a five-person elected board. Now again, that won't take effect for quite a while. So in the meantime, there is an opportunity, according to Connecticut general statutes, for us to appoint alternates, which would serve a term that would end in conjunction with the currently elected officials. And then we would just let those lapse when they, when those terms come to an end and go elected from there. At which point, if we pursued the charter revisions, I think that running into issues with one or two people, you know, not necessarily fulfilling their obligations with a five-person board would be much less hindering than a three-person board. So that's kind of my take on it. I, I don't really support adding an ordinance where I don't think we need it. I agree with, with Attorney Slater's, you know, analysis of our, because we are a charter town, our legislative branch is the town meeting. However, under Charter 402, it states that any Connecticut general statutes in effect on the date the charter was put into place, anywhere that it says Board of Selectmen in the statutes, it means our Board of Selectmen. So because Connecticut general statutes nine dash 199 was established in 1946, I believe that we do have all the powers entitled to the Board of Selectmen under that Connecticut general statute.
But just if I can continue that thought, Attorney Slater doesn't, thinks that the ordinance is necessary to give us that authority. And, and what I'm hearing you say, Keith, is that we already have that authority. From your interpretation.
Correct, yes.
And, and Mr. Slater, Attorney Slater's suggesting that we don't have that.
It's his interpretation of that statute. That's why he highlighted the green and the blue, that because we're a charter town, it's his interpretation.
Right.
And Keith's got his interpretation.
Okay, okay. No, I just want to make sure I understand. So your interpretation is we have the authority. Attorney Slater's interpretation is we don't, and the ordinance would give us that.
Well, he says, he says you'd have to go to town meeting to do it because that is the actual legislative body on the, so that, and I'd have to study the statute more for the appointment of the elected officials. They've just got a specific date, they're elected versus appointed. I mean, if this was an appointed board, there'd be no question you could, you guys could do it. But I think it's because it's, it's an elected position. I know you have it for like, like Terry's thing, it starts the clock for 35 days and you post it and you let the parties know. But I think he's handling this a little bit differently. And I think he put this out there, it's not carved in stone. If you guys want to do it, it was a way to solve a problem we ran into. If you had a problem, this was a faster way to meet the deadline.
Right.
And he was trying to give you an avenue to do that, so.
And he also mentioned we can, clearly the board's composition, the way it is today suggests that we might have another problem. I mean.
Well, it's the world we're in today, we're having trouble filling a lot of vacancies on boards and commissions.
Right.
And that's the only one that has that, that tight timeframe to conduct your business.
And it's only three.
Which ties us to the state and OPM on our reporting.
And it's only three, and we clearly have had two times in a row, two times where we've had a difficult time.
Well, in, in all reality, if you're only going to, I was on, we have, we have safety committees that meet four times a year. Nobody's in love with meetings two times a year or four times a year. I mean, I was on mid-state regional planning for East Hampton for 25 years and it was, you know, it felt like it was just a waste of time, but you, you committed to it, you got to do it.
Yeah, right. And he also mentioned if we have an ordinance, we can, we can eliminate the ordinance if we feel we, it's not necessary.
Well, I think what Ken's trying to say, and I'm agreeing with Keith, you can put it in the charter, but that's not going to go into effect for a long time. And then you could appeal that ordinance very easily. But you could do this now if you're so inclined, put the ordinance in and then when you get done with charter, take it out and then deal with this for the charter.
Okay. Tiffany?
I guess what I'm struggling with is that there's two competing interpretations that I think are both incredibly valid, right? So the way I read what Attorney Slater has presented to us, he's recommending the ordinance, but he doesn't seem to think that it's required because he's offering another solution to the situation. So.
I think he's trying to be open, but like I said, I, I blew the whistle that we were in trouble. Give us a couple of ways to prevent this from happening again, and he did, so.
Right.
It's not the end of the day. It doesn't have to be done tonight if you want more information. Or if you, you, however the vote goes, we'll, we'll live with the outcome. It was just.
I mean, is there no way to definitively determine the question of the language under Part B?
Probably have to ask his partner because he, he clearly didn't help with his opinion. It must've been after lunch, but I.
I mean, that would be what I would want to know with respect because I, I think.
Okay.
I think we can't live in ambiguities and I appreciate that Attorney Slater put this, pulled this together. But we can't deal with ambiguities. We need to know very specifically if what, you know, if, if what Keith is saying is true, then we wouldn't need to go through this extra step.
If the board's willing, why don't we table it? And Keith, what if I have you and him have a conversation?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, that's fine. I, the other thing that I wanted to put before the board is, is just like I said, like, you know, there's, there's multiple different ways to handle this situation.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, Attorney Slater's put forth one that he feels is conservative and, and covers all the bases without leaving it open to interpretation or, or where it could possibly be second guessed. And, and I just was in, you know, the theory of expediency and getting things done because, you know, we, we need to get them done. I didn't feel the need to wait because I don't see ambiguity in the interpretation. But, but again, that's because I'm taking a more liberal look at the interpretation than, than possibly Ken is, you know? And, and there's multiple different ways to handle this, whether it's charter, whether it's ordinance, whether we rely on state statute. You know, I, I just wanted to throw that out there as, as a meet, as a method of possibly getting that clock started earlier. Because even if we do decide to go with ordinance as a more conservative route, now we're talking town meeting, then a 35-day, then, and so now. now we're talking town meeting, then a 35-day, then, and so now, you know, we've added a couple of months, a little bit more to it.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, and ultimately what I would like to do is just throw it on the table. And again, that's why there's multiple different moving pieces here is I don't want to get into this position again where we have to rely on, on these kinds of things is, um, I, I agree. I think Attorney Slater at one point said that it, it's difficult to find people. We all know that as alternates because as an alternate, you go to a meeting and you just kind of sit there. Um, so I would like to see this be ultimately an expansion of the elected board through the proper, um, you know, charter revisions and, and going through the proper motions for that. But again, that's a very long timeframe. So, um, you know.
Yeah, I believe because of the timeframe and we were in the now when we needed a solution, he gave us a quick fix.
Right.
And knowing we could appeal that if, if you decided to go down that route with the char- charter, then we could get rid of the ordinance. But I think this was for, until that happens, if it happens again. But like I said, there's no pressure for me. It's just, it was a way to get the town to conduct the business that needed to get conducted and to back up our new assessor that was feeling that, you know, you know.
Exposed to potentially.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But to make sure I understand, I don't think it makes it, I don't think you need to talk to Attorney Slater because I think you, you have an interpretation that you feel comfortable with. He's presenting a more conservative approach. So I don't know that that needs, do you think you need to?
I, I, I mean, you know, to, to Tiffany's point, he did put in there that, you know, it's, it's possible. It's not his recommended approach. So again, it's up to us to, you know, um, do we feel comfortable as a board, um, deciding between a conservative approach or a liberal approach? Um, you know, I, I would leave that up to, um, my fellow select people.
Okay, so, but Tiffany, you were saying that you thought you needed more clarity or getting another opinion on?
Well, I, I don't want to hold anything up. Um, but it just seems to me that a legal opinion should be definitive and in my humble opinion, as you know, that I just, so if there's ambiguity and there's different interpretations out there, there has to be somebody with the expertise to say definitively, this section does X, Y, Z. And this is what it means and it's not exposing us to anything. So I, I'm just concerned about.
Like I said, there's no rush to have it done tonight. I can shoot him an email with, with your, your, uh, your interpretation and have him, you know, come back with another response.
With the idea that we're looking for something definitive? And, and, and he may say this is, this is.
Sure.
It's gonna be, okay, then we'll have to make the decision.
We're not elected officials, but as soon as Don and I both read that in the office, we're like, no, no offense, I tried to. Saw this coming.
Okay.
All right.
So.
Seems pretty clear that.
Yeah, I, but, but, but I also, I also agree with Attorney Slater that, that technically we are a charter town and, and we act like a legislative body, but we're technically not.
Right.
Right.
The only caveat is, is section 402 says anything that existed before and, and fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, this law was passed originally in 1946. So, uh, it was around before us. So, um, technically we still are the Board of Selectmen for just this purpose.
Okay. So let's do this. Let's, let's table the motion. Let's go back one more time and look for a definitive position on this. And then regardless of what that outcome is, bring it before the board for the next meeting and we'll take action. Okay, good. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, um, so that moves us to nine B, which is the draft agenda for November 7th. Um, so obviously as always, um, reach out to the town manager's office, uh, after you review that and, uh, discuss it with me if you want anything added to that agenda. Beyond what we've talked about tonight. So thank you, Mr. Tierney. Any other new business you wish to bring before the board?
I do not.
Board, any new business that hasn't.
Nothing for me.
So hearing that, that moves us to, uh, number 10, which is our consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually. It may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. We have the approval of our minutes, uh, 10 dot eight dot one, October 10, 2024, regular meeting and tax refunds, which I didn't. Oh, thank you.
Our name's on it.
Tax, tax. Well, my name was on once. Um, okay, so we have that. Does anybody wish to pull anything out?
No.
All right. So with that said, um, well, uh, any discussion? I move forward to approve the consent agenda as, uh, as presented. For the approval of the minutes and tax refunds, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Mr. Larson.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you.
Keith. Keith Bennett, aye.
Thank you.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Peter Caspari. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Moves to 11 on our agenda, which is liaison reports. I have nothing for A, uh, which is the AHM Youth Services, uh, Hebron Board of Ed. Tiffany?
Um, a couple of quick things. So the Board of Ed celebrated, um, their student liaison and Hebron Kid Governor, Thomas Case. Um, the new Hebron Kid Governor will be joining them next month. Their administrative team presented the 2023, 24 assessment results to the board. And so there was discussion on that. Um, and it also looks like there's a couple of events the PTA are having. In particular, they were awarded, um, an incentive for doubling their growth in membership. And those funds will be reinvested back into the schools. So lots going on on the Board of Ed.
Great. Mr. Larson, anything from the Board of Finance?
No.
So, Mr. Pettit, anything from land acquisition?
They did not meet yet.
Hey, Claudia is not with us, uh, ran Board of Ed, uh, and so she'll obviously provide an update as needed. Um, Mr. Tierney, anything you wish, uh, from your efforts in the liaison section? I know sometimes you have something. No?
I pretty much covered everything I had tonight.
All right. Thank you. That moves us to 12, which is our public comment. Um, please, we'll read the preamble, but, um, please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, not anybody online? Nothing from the public. Okay.
Move to adjourn the Hebron Board of Selectmen's meeting at 8:36 PM.
I'll second that. Thank you very much. Thank you for those attending in person. Thank you for anyone who's attended us and been virtually. And as always, thank you to the town and the staff for all the good work that you do. Thank you.